Public comment.
We actually do have one person that signed up for public comment.
Okay, we have one person who signed up for public comment. I think there was a couple of, did you see there was a couple of emails as well that came in?
Did they come in before four o'clock?
Oh, I think they came in at five, so yeah. All right, I can read those later. All right, okay, I'll recognize our former council president, Councilor Murphy. Name and address for the record, even though we all know it very well.
I have the drill.
Okay, good, all right.
My name is Barbara Murphy with the 28th Forest Street in Malden, Massachusetts. I'm the former Ward Five City Councilor, and I'm here to speak in favor of Paper 5024 for the council confirmation of the mayoral reappointment of Charles Iovin as a member of the Malden Planning Board. I understand that the Personnel and Appointments Committee held two meetings on this paper and referred it out without recommendation. Over the past 14 years, I've spent many evenings at planning board meetings and have had the pleasure of working with Mr. Iovin in his capacity as a member of the planning board. Although we have not always agreed, I have had the utmost and do have the utmost respect for him. Mr. Iovin is extremely dedicated, intelligent individual. He conducts himself in the most professional manner, has an in-depth knowledge of our zoning ordinances, does his research on each project by conducting site visits. He is familiar with our Malden neighborhoods and the topography of our land. I am frankly astounded that the Personnel Appointments Committee referred him out without recommendation. I hope when you vote this evening that you will remember this city is full of people with different perspectives and views, and we don't want to stack our boards and commissions with only people that think like you. Chuck, excuse me, Chuck brings an unequal institutional knowledge and a balance that is an asset to the planning board. As we focus on DEI initiatives in our community, let us remember that one's age brings not only knowledge but wisdom. I hope you will vote for his confirmation out favorably as anything else will be a greater service to the community of Malden. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I did get a couple of emails. I'm just trying to see where they went.
So the deadline to submit an email for public comment is 4:00 p.m. Are you going to save those emails and attach them to the history of the paper?
All right, sure, okay, I can, all right. Just, I can't even seem to find them here. All right, well, we'll move on, on business. All right, first thing up, we have, the next thing up is consent agenda. This evening's consent agenda consists of meeting minutes to be approved, six petitions to be referred to license, two papers to refer to ordinance and/or finance, and two communications to be placed on file. Do any councils have a desire to remove any of these items from the consent agenda for the purpose of further discussion? All right, so I'm hearing none and seeing none. Do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Motion by Councilor Simonelli, seconded by Councilor Cica, to approve the consent agenda. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, so the consent agenda is hereby approved. All right, moving on to the more motions in order and resolutions. Clerk will read the paper.
Paper 160-24, Order That In accordance with MGL Chapter 44, Section 53A, the City of Malden Accept A Gift Of Funds In The Form Of A Parcel Of Land From 35 Green Street, LLC, DBA Hoff's Bakery Located At Zero Canal Street, Known And Numbered As Malden Assessors Parcel 063239916, Here To For Referred To As The Bike Kitchen And To Be Utilized As A Bike Repair Station Or Bike Kitchen By The General Public Who Utilize The Northern Strand Community Trail Abutting The Property To The East. Sponsor Is Councilor Crowe.
So, Councilor Crowe for the paper? Do you have anything?
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Okay, do I have to do, okay, so I need to, I'm planning to recuse myself. This paper is associated with the Bike To The Sea Organization, which, though I'm not a board member at the current time, I'm closely associated with that. So I would like to get the consent of the council to recuse myself. So in considering that, I will hand the gavel to Councilor. So, okay, so, all right, so I will do it now. And the vote, do I leave or?
All those in favor?
Okay. Okay, all right.
Councilor Crowe for the paper.
Thank you. Mr. President, and so, as you know, we do have a bike kitchen that is on this piece of land that was, is owned by Hoff's. And Bike To The Sea has secured a lease of the property for the, from the current property owner to operate that bicycle, the bike kitchen. And so I'm not sure if this needs to be referred to public properties or we just, we can make a motion on the floor just to accept this as a gift to allow them to continue and kind of open up that bike kitchen.
Counselor Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. President. So when you say it's a gift, it's a lease? We're not taking it, we're not going to buy it, right?
No.
So there's no, they're not charging us, so they consider it a gift?
No.
But they're still going to have control of the property by ownership?
It will be the property of the city, but it's not in funds. It's in lieu of a piece of, a parcel of land that Bike To The Sea will have a lease on to run the bike kitchen.
So my question is, the city's going to accept the gift from Green Street, DBA Hoff's, to own, and then we're going to let the Bike To The Sea people use it, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Counselor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you. So I also just wanted to clarify, so accepting a gift of fun? Is that a specific term? I'm sorry, I don't know, is that like?
It is, believe me, we had this conversation. It is a specific term, but that's why I wanted to really make sure that it had in form of a parcel of land to make it clear that we weren't getting any funds from them, but that is legal, yeah.
And so, in terms of the, in terms of the lease, do we have, like, how much, how much involved? So we would be signing the lease if that's right, right? With Bike To The Sea, is that correct?
They, so maybe this does go to public properties.
I mean, I'm excited to help move this project forward. I just want to know what I'm, where we're at in the process.
So I think the city kind of negotiated sort of the property being turned over to the city for the purposes of a bike kitchen. So Bike To The Sea will run the bike kitchen, but it'll be city-owned property. So if they decided not to, we'd have to do something different.
Yes, I mean, there's a very helpful attached letter from Jack Woodhouse that kind of goes through this and says, you know, there's limited financial impact. They did an environmental survey. All of that seems in order.
Environmental survey is 244 pages, so feel free to read.
I, you know, and I will disclose to the general public of Malden, I have not read all 244 pages at this point, but I do trust our capable staff to have summarized it. The, and the potential of an installation of a blue bike station. So there's lots of great reasons. It says that, should the city accept the property donation, the city solicitor will work with Bike To The Sea to execute an agreement for continued use of the land. I think my question was more, like, does the council, does the council have a role in that? Or maybe that's a question for our city solicitor in terms of approving the lease? Or is this sort of a necessary precondition to move forward? We just have to accept the parcel of land, and then we'll be able to move forward with negotiating those terms? Is that, is that my understanding?
Thank you, President, Council President. So they already have a lease with Hoff, and I think we would just be accepting that lease with any changes, if that answers your question. So we obviously can't lease, do anything related to the lease until we own the property. But once we own the property, then we would renegotiate that lease if necessary. And I don't think that it would be much of a renegotiation.
And can I ask, have you and your staff had a chance to look at that lease?
Yes.
And you feel good about it?
Yes.
Okay. I would, so I think it would be, I think it's reasonable to accept the land and move forward. I would love to make sure that we get some information back about, like, what that lease looks like so that we understand that, if only because, you know, I think we're taking a look at how we authorize non-city uses of city property, and I just want to make sure our process is fair and, you know, consistent across. This is a unique situation because we're accepting this parcel for this explicit purpose, which I, you know, I think is reflected in all of this documentation. But I, we may, it may be whoof us to have more conversations, like, maybe in the Public Properties Committee about just how we're approving those lease terms. So that would be my comment. And I'd be prepared to make a motion at the right time to approve this without referral. Stop there, thank you.
Thank you, Counselor McDonald. Counselor Linehan.
Thank you, Mr. President, or President Pro Tem. I am fully in support of this. I'm excited about it. Been over to the site, it's amazing. Well, one thing I wanted to just highlight is sort of the critical importance to the, like, continuation of the Spot Pond Brook Greenway and other interconnectedness that is trying to be, you know, achieved in the region. I'm sorry, I don't know why I keep addressing you. I know you're just, you're not, we're not supposed to be talking to.
I think somebody else wants to ask me a question.
That's fine. So I think it's great that we're going to be able to kind of, you know, create these connections that are so critical to kind of regional connectivity and biking. The only question that I had, and maybe this is a question for our solicitor, I'm not sure. When, my understanding is that we're looking at a blue bike station in kind of the same general area. Is this, will this literally be the same property where that's going to go? And does this open us up for that to be easier? Or will we potentially have to come back to do a different arrangement to have the blue bike station, if that's still the plan?
I don't think that we, that any, that the planning, the OSPCD would have to come back regarding the blue bike station. That is separate than this particular parcel. Although it will be part of that parcel, it's not in this same, for the same conversation.
Okay, great, thank you so much. That's great. I'm all set.
Counselor Simonelli.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I'm for this project as well. I mean, I think it's a good thing. And I just think that procedurally, just to be procedurally sound, I think it does need to go before public properties, just to hammer all these things out. And, you know, I don't see a problem with it. But I think it does procedurally have to go to public properties with this. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor Simonelli. Counselor Spatafora for the second time.
Yeah, I appreciate it, and I'll be quick. I do want to say that I'm very supportive of this, but I think Counsel McDonald, that's, I was thinking as he was talking. So my, what I want to see is make sure that we're fair and balanced, right? Because what's going to happen is, it doesn't happen often, but if we're not going to be charging the Bike To The Sea, which is not a city organization, down the road, this could be another use where we certainly want to encourage these type of, I would say partnerships, but in the same token realizing we can't always afford to give something away for free. So I think we have to be cognizant of that. The other thing there is, I know this utility's there. Are we responsible for those utilities from the city's perspective? Or are they paying for that? Because I would have a concern with that, again, because you set precedent, and then you go down a path where, no pun intended, we have to cover everybody's expenses. And the third thing is, I know you've looked at the lease. Because they're renting from us, do we have to have some type of, do they have to have some type of insurance policy where if somebody gets hurt fixing a bike there, they're not going to sue? I mean, they're going to sue everybody, but do we have to have some type of built-in policy for the Bike To The Sea to at least purchase to cover the city's perspective? I know it's a lot of things that I don't mean to, you know, rain in the parade, but the same token is, this is something that I'm sure unfortunately we'll see again, and somebody might be asked for the same set of circumstances, and we might not be able to provide them. So whatever we do here, I think we have to at least be able to duplicate or defend why we're not doing it in other part of the city.
Oh, absolutely. There would definitely be some indemnification for the city for anyone who is using that particular bike kitchen.
Okay, and you know about the utilities offhand?
I do not remember about the, because they actually signed that lease a while ago. We did take a look at it, but if we're owning the property, then we can renegotiate the lease.
Yeah, I guess if we're not paying for it now, it's probably moot point. Just wanted to double check. I appreciate it, thanks. It's all I have.
Counselor Simonelli?
Make a motion to send it to public properties.
Is there a second to the motion to refer it to public properties? Oh, Counselor McDonald.
I was just having a sidebar with Counselor Crowe. I, you know, two weeks is not going to hold up this project. I would hope that we could schedule a Public Properties Committee meeting next week, so this could be back on the agenda in two weeks, and that'll give us a chance to kind of review those lease terms. It would be great if we could get a copy of the lease. I know, the bike kitchen's already there, nothing's going to change. I think, as I'm thinking about it, it does feel helpful to have basically a lease or a draft lease in place if we know that's the goal at the point that we accept the property. Because I'm just trying to think about what happens when, if we accept a property, the lease is actually not in place, you know? Maybe we need to accept it sort of contingent on, I don't know. Anyways, I'm verbally processing my thoughts, which is more appropriate for committee, so I'm happy to second that motion.
Thank you. So the motion has been made and seconded just from the chair. I do think it makes sense to send it to public properties. There is also a report in here from Nangle Consulting related to the environmental contamination impact. It doesn't look like it's anything too significant, but probably from a due diligence perspective, it makes sense to look. So on the motion to refer this paper to public properties, all those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed that has referred to public properties? I'll go get Council President Winslow.
Next order of business is committee reports. CD Clerk, please read the next order, the next paper.
Paper 161-24, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on License To Whom Was Referring Papers 78 Through 92, Series of 2024, Having Considered The Same, Make The Following Report. Committee recommends these papers out favorably to the full council.
On Counselor Cica's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? Clerk will read the, well, let's, Counselor Cica, want to speak to the papers then? And then?
Paper 78-24, Petition Taxi Driver Ryan Bragg, 27 Slaton Way, Roxbury, Renewal. 79-24, Taxi Driver Louis Koller, 235 Revere Street, 503 Revere, Renewal. 80-24, Taxi Driver John Danker, 34 Highland Court, Malden, Renewal. Paper 81-24, Taxi Driver Albert E. Frost III, 679 Broadway, 2L, Chelsea, Renew, Application. Paper 82-24, Taxi Driver Christopher Jackson, 24 Surfside Road, Len, Renewal. Paper 83-24, Taxi Driver Stephen Lauber, 4 Blake Court, Everett, New. 84-24, Taxi Driver Dominique Long, 198 Tremont Street, Apartment 119, Boston, Mass, Renewal. Paper 85-24, Taxi Driver James Flan, 5 Island Hill Avenue, 212, Malden, New. Paper 86-24, Taxi Driver Donald F. Porter, 17 Silverleaf Way, Peabody, Renewal. Paper 87-24, Taxi Driver Michael Paglia, 9 Richardson Street, Malden, Renewal. Paper 88-24, Taxi Driver William L. Sweet, 117 Medford Street, Malden, Renewal. 89-24, Taxi Driver Valentine Chilay, 30 Washington Street, Brighton, Mass, Renewal. Paper 90-24, Taxi Driver Carlos F. Vargas, 290 Mishmomb Road, Woburn, Mass, Renewal. Paper 91-24, Livery License, MGR Transportation, LLC, 228 Pearl Street, Malden, One Vehicle, Renewal. Paper 92-24, Petition Livery Driver Amr Jit Singh, 228 Pearl Street, Malden, Renewal.
So Counselor Cica for the paper.
Thank you, Council President. Last week, the License Committee met to discuss all of these. They're just about all renewals except for a couple. There were no issues with any of these petitions. The committee made a motion to recommend all of them out favorably for, to grant. So a motion to grant.
All right, motion to grant by Counselor Cica, seconded by Counselor Simonelli. All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, that, those petitions are hereby granted. Next order of business?
Paper 162-24, Committee Report. The Standing Committee on Rules And Ordinance To Whom Was Referring Paper 93, Series of 2024, Having Considered The Same, Make The Following Report. Committee unanimously recommends this paper out favorably to the full council.
Okay, on Counselor Linehan's motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Cologne Hayes, all those in favor? Any opposed? The committee report is received. Clerk will read the paper.
Paper 93-24, Be It Ordained By The Malden City Council That The Code Of The City Of Malden 2.24.030 Public Works, Parks, Traffic, Water, Sewer, And Cemetery Salary Schedule Be Hereby Amended To Reflect The Following Compensation Levels To Be Effective July 1, 2023.
All right, Counselor Linehan for the paper in the committee. I'm sorry, I'm sorry, yeah. Okay, great, there you go.
Thank you, Mr. President. So this was a joint meeting of ordinance and finance, a pair of papers, as we always do, with the financial, with the ordinance change reflecting a one-year contract adjustment of a 3% cost of living, as the clerk said, retro to July 1. Really represents a good faith effort on the city's part to do this call while union negotiations for this group are ongoing, and the committee recommended unanimously favorably.
All right, any discussion on this paper? All right, on Counselor Linehan's motion to enroll the ordinance, seconded by Counselor Taylor. All those in favor? Any opposed? The ordinance is hereby ordained. Or enrolled, so you had a majority there, so, all right. Committee report, next paper, please. Does anybody, would anybody like to see that paper ordained all in one night? So, motion by Counselor Crowe to suspend council rules so that we can ordain this paper tonight, seconded by Counselor O'Malley. Let's take a roll call on that vote.
Counselor Cologne Hayes? Counselor Condon? Counselor Crowe? Counselor Linehan? Counselor McDonald? Counselor O'Malley? Counselor Cica? Counselor Simonelli? Counselor Spatafora? Counselor Taylor? Counsel President Winslow?
Yes, so the rules are suspended. We can now vote to ordain. So motion to ordain by Counselor Crowe, seconded by Counselor O'Malley. Let's take a roll call on the motion to ordain.
Counselor Cologne Hayes? Counselor Condon? Counselor Crowe? Counselor Linehan? Counselor McDonald? Counselor O'Malley? Counselor Cica? Counselor Simonelli? Counselor Spatafora? Counselor Taylor? Counsel President Winslow?
Counsel President Winslow, yes, so that paper is hereby ordained. Next paper then.
Paper 163-24, Committee Report. The Standing Committee On Finance To Whom Was Referring Paper 94, Series of 2024, Having Considered The Same, Make The Following Report. Committee recommends this paper out favorably to the full council.
So on motion by Counselor McDonald to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor Condon, all those in favor say aye. Any opposed? The paper is received. Counselor McDonald, let's see, Clerk, will you please read the paper?
Paper 94-24, Order That The Sum Of $145,000 Is Transferred From Salary Reserved To DPW Salaries.
Counselor McDonald for the committee. Let's see, let me get you there. There you go.
Thank you, Counsel President. As my colleague Counsel Linehan said, this was, we had very little discussion. This was an easy vote, I think, in our joint ordinance and finance committee. Just to clarify, this really just gets us, again, through this fiscal year. It's an appropriation that gets us through, get back dates us definitely 2023, and gets us through this fiscal year. So I assume we will see these figures reflected in, you know, the next year's budget when we get to that point. But this just trues us up so that we can support the city in continuing those good faith negotiations.
So any counsel waiting to discuss? So on Counselor McDonald's motion to adopt the order, seconded by Counselor Condon, Clerk will call the roll.
Counselor Cologne Hayes? Counselor Condon? Counselor Crowe? Counselor Linehan? Counselor McDonald? Counselor O'Malley? Counselor Cica? Counselor Simonelli? Counselor Spatafora? Counselor Taylor? Counsel President Winslow?
Yes, that order is adopted. Next order of business.
Paper 164-24, Committee Report. The Standing Committee On Personnel And Appointments To Whom Was Referring Papers 50 And 77, Series Of 2024, Having Considered The Same, Make The Following Report. Committee recommends Paper 50-24 out without recommendation. Committee further recommends Paper 77-24 out favorably to the full council.
So Counselor Cologne Hayes, I recognize you for, yes, let's see, yeah, all right.
Okay, thank you. I had sent you a note earlier, so I would like to recuse myself from this vote. Even though I had contacted the Ethics Commission, my husband, Patrick Joseph Hayes, is on the planning board, and they didn't feel that there was a violation there, but just on an abundance of caution, I am going to recuse myself for this vote. I had, for those watching, I wrote a pretty lengthy reason why on my Facebook page. You can read it, but I would like to do that. Thank you.
All right, so, so let's see, yeah, I think you do. She made, okay, all right. So on Counselor Cologne Hayes' motion to recuse herself, seconded by Counselor O'Malley, please take a roll call vote. Or is it, all those, oh, good voice, on voice vote? All those in favor say aye. Any opposed? All right, so Counselor Cologne Hayes is recused from consideration of Paper 50-24. All right.
50-20.
So, yeah, so then, let's see, then, have we accepted? So then Counselor Linehan, you make a motion to receive the committee report, seconded by Counselor O'Malley. All those in favor receiving the committee report, say aye. Any opposed? The committee report is accepted. Counselor Linehan for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Paper 50-24, Mayoral Repartement, Charles Iovin, 42 Appleton Street, Malden, As A Member Of The Planning Board, Having Served Since November 12, 1985, Said Term To Expire March 1, 2028, To Commence Upon Confirmation By The City Council.
All right, now Counselor Linehan for the paper.
Thank you, Council President. So as we heard a little bit about in public comment, just by way of recap, so our council, having had consensus in our charter review committee last year to bring in all appointments where a board member has served 20 years or more. We've had two so far this year, and Mr. Iovin is the second one that we are bringing in under that criteria. We met with Mr. Iovin probably about a month ago at this point, had an extremely thoughtful hour-plus-long interview in committee. Conversation went on so long that our committee actually ran out of time to discuss. So we actually tabled the appointment to a meeting two weeks later. So that's just by way of explanation for why this has been a little bit drawn out. Our committee met last week to discuss. Again, we had a thoughtful discussion amongst ourselves. Mr. Iovin gave us a really, I thought, helpful overview of, you know, how we want to approach some of the really critical challenges facing the city. I think, speaking personally, as, you know, a counselor up here, we have a lot of financial challenges. And one of the things that we talked about was what, in his view, what the planning board's approach would be to addressing some of the tax revenue issues and growth issues, affordable housing, transportation. We really covered a broad range of issues that I think are important for this council and the planning board to be working in partnership on for the financial health and future growth of the city. It became clear during that discussion that we did not all have the same opinion on how to move forward on the appointment. So our committee, which constitutes five people, three of us, I made a vote, I made a motion to recommend, to issue without recommendation back to the council for discussion, essentially. That vote was split three to two. As counselors, I, again, speaking personally, I think one of our duties is to do our due diligence and to meet with board appointments. I don't think anybody, no matter how deeply we respect the work, which I will say I do deeply respect Mr. Iovin's work and years, 40 years of commitment to the planning board. You know, having gone through this process on the other side of the table, being appointed to a board and going through the personnel process, it is, nobody is getting a rubber stamp, nobody is.
So, yeah, so then, let's see, then, have we accepted? So, then, Councilor Linehan, you make a motion to receive the Committee Report, seconded by Councilor O'Malley. All those in favor receiving the Committee Report, say aye? Any opposed? The Committee Report is accepted. Councilor Linehan for the paper.
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, I'm so sorry, go ahead.
Paper fifty dash twenty four, mayoral reappointment, Charles Iovin, forty-two Appleton Street, Malden, as a member of the planning board, having served since November twelfth, nineteen eighty-five, said term to expire March first, two thousand and twenty-eight, to commence upon confirmation by the city council.
All right, now, Councilor Linehan for the paper.
Thank you, Council President. So, as we heard a little bit about in public comment, just by way of recap, so, our council, having had consensus in our charter review committee last year to bring in all appointments where a board member has served twenty years or more, we've had two so far this year, and Mr. Iovin is the second one that we are bringing in under that criteria. We met with Mr. Iovin probably about a month ago at this point, had an extremely thoughtful hour-plus-long interview in committee. Conversation went on so long that our committee actually ran out of time to discuss, so we actually tabled the appointment to a meeting two weeks later. So, that's just by way of explanation for why this has been a little bit drawn out. Our committee met last week to discuss, again, we had a thoughtful discussion amongst ourselves. Mr. Iovin gave us a really, I thought, helpful overview of, you know, how we want to approach some of the really critical challenges facing the city. I think, speaking personally, as, you know, a counselor up here, we have a lot of financial challenges, and one of the things that we talked about was what, in his view, what the planning board's approach would be to addressing some of the tax revenue issues and growth issues, affordable housing, transportation. We really covered a broad range of issues that I think are important for this council and the planning board to be working in partnership on for the financial health and future growth of the city. It became clear during that discussion that we did not all have the same opinion on how to move forward on the appointment. So, our committee, which constitutes five people, three of us, I made a vote, I made a motion to recommend, to issue without recommendation back to the council for discussion, essentially. That vote was split three to two. As counselors, I, again, speaking personally, I think one of our duties is to do our due diligence and to meet with board appointments. I don't think anybody, no matter how deeply we respect the work, which I will say I do deeply respect Mr. Iovin's work and years, forty years of commitment to the planning board, you know, having gone through this process on the other side of the table, being appointed to a board and going through the personnel process, it is, nobody is getting a rubber stamp, nobody is appointed for life, and I don't mean that in a callous way. I mean that, as counselors, it's our job to bring folks in and have a thoughtful conversation, which is exactly what we did in this scenario. I don't think, and again, I'm speaking as, only as myself, we're all up here with one vote, one voice, I don't think a committee of five people that's so divided should really be making that final decision, which is why I made the motion for this discussion, to move forward to the full council, for us to discuss and make a determination for how to move forward with this appointment. Again, I have my one vote, I thought our conversation was very, very helpful, I may not agree with what Mr. Iovin identified as the key challenges, or more importantly, how I would prefer to hear them addressed, or how he would like to address them, but again, I'm just one vote, and so, you know, that's a much more long-winded recap than we usually give for Committee Reports, but I think this is a serious decision, and I think for all the years that Chuck has given our city, he deserves to have a thoughtful discussion from this body. And so, I'll open the floor and kind of leave it at that. I'm happy to take questions for anyone that wasn't able to be in committee, but that's as helpful a recap as I think I can give, and would love to hear from some of my colleagues.
All right, so the floor is open to any council who would like to speak on the recommendation for reappointment, so, any council would like to step to the click? So, let's see, all right, let's see, we have Councilor Crowe.
President? Oh, thank you. And so, we did have quite a lengthy, you know, conversation with Mr. Iovin, and, you know, we, I think everybody had, yeah, kind of agreed that he's always well-prepared, all the things that Council Murphy had mentioned, you know, does his site visits, really encourages the questions, encourages his colleagues on the planning board to really dig deep and really go look at these, at all these, at all these sites, sorry, I have a bit of a cold today, but, and he's been very dedicated, and I think the question around the housing, the question was actually posed, how does he take one of his, something that might be a personal decision, his personal opinion, but then not really bring that into the planning board, and that was really around the MBTA, the zoning that happened to that, and he really said that he voted for it, not that he thought it was like the best plan, but I think we've had that conversation up here, I think actually Council O'Malley, he didn't want to do it at December thirty-first, the deadline, thinking we really needed to dig deeper into this one. So, that was sort of that question, that was around the housing. And, you know, transportation was really around traffic, and, you know, whether you agree with it or not, traffic is an issue, not just in Malden, but, you know, everywhere. And so, I know that we talk about that forty percent of Malden residents don't own cars or don't, yeah, don't own cars, but, you know, forty percent of, you know, fifty-nine thousand that we had a few years ago, and forty percent of sixty-six thousand is more cars, more traffic. You know, the financial piece was a, that's what he said, our biggest things have got to be finances, and even when we do talk about housing, I agree with Counselor McDonald when he said about doing the MBTA commuter, that we're not just doing this alone, that the whole region will be doing this, and that's really why the state was pushing us. But, I think, right before that meeting with Mr. Iovin, or the second meeting, we had a presentation from our strategic planner, Mr. Hogan, and really talked about, you know, the finances, that what we're going to be hit with, and everyone agrees that it really needs, we got to build up our commercial tax base, and so, even if we added all these housing things, and we talk about affordability, and I agree with that, but when we don't have the balance of the commercial tax base, we're really putting that on our residents, and not the homeowners, you know, but the renters. So, it really does take away, you know, some affordability, you know, and we can't find the balance because we have the levy, and we try to, we assign it where it needs to be. So, unless we start building up our commercial tax base, it's going to be on the renters, which does not help our affordability issue. So, I think that, you know, not approving this reappointment really sends a signal to the city, you know, don't be too dedicated, don't want to do this job for too long, don't be prepared, you know, that really, I think he listens to every single argument, it asks a lot of questions, and I think that he deserves a reappointment.
Thank you. Councilor Condon?
Thank you, Mr. President. I've worked with Mr. Iovin from nineteen eighty-six on, so I'm quite familiar with him, and he, without question, is second to none in preparing for any meeting involving the city moving forward in whatever direction people come in with the papers. So, he's always spot-on. I think he has the respect of the people he serves with up in, up on the planning board, or he certainly wouldn't have been voted by his peers for so many terms, so many years as a planning board chairman. He has a tremendous relationship with our city planner, who I think, without question, we all respect, and she certainly knows her business. So, to me, you know, I can't possibly understand why we would question somebody that's always there, always prepared, and he's not political, that's for sure. So, I hope that we use our head and know, just because he may be in there over twenty years, doesn't disqualify him, it only makes him the candidate that he is. He's so committed to the city, I can't remember him missing a meeting. So, he's just so dedicated, we're so lucky to have this guy, and I'm not sure we know it, but he would be a huge loss to this community. Thank you, Chuck, for your service.
All right, thank you, Council Condon. Council Simonelli?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I just want to make a couple of statements up here, and, you know, I was at the council meeting last night in Everett, for some business there, as you all know, I work over there, and, you know, they're having a tough time filling boards, just like we are over here, and I remember when I was serving last time on the council, you know, we had an abundance of people that were actually coming forward to serve on these boards and committees. And, you know, this time around, coming back to the council, we seem to be having issues with, you know, people wanting to serve on these boards and these, these commissions. And listen, I don't have a problem with, you know, if you want to, if this body wants to call folks in for their reappointments and to see if their views have changed, and they want to go in different directions, you know, I wouldn't even be opposed to calling people in, you know, just to, or just putting, putting an ad out there every time there's a reappointment. I'm sure that the city finances wouldn't want to do that, but, you know, but even to, even to see if there's anybody else that's interested in a seat that's coming up for a reappointment, I wouldn't have a problem with that. But if it's this body's position, that they want to go in a different direction than what it used to go in, then, you know, I think it's due diligence on us up here to change the ordinances and the rules to go in that, to go in that direction, and not go after like the individuals that are upholding the ordinance and rules that we're setting forth, or the ones that are already there and been there, and maybe some of them are antiquated and, you know, need some change to them. But that's our due diligence to do those things, and not to, you know, go after board members for upholding them. And I don't know if that's even what's going on here, but, you know, I've been hearing a lot, like, you know, somebody has been in this position too long, for twenty years, thirty years, and it kind of concerns me, because, you know, it's just, I didn't know when that became a disqualification for somebody having, you know, a lot of years of experience. I mean, just look at us in our own careers and our own jobs. Would you want, you know, the board of directors coming to you and saying, hey, look, you know, I see you got twenty years, and you got to go, you know, prepare and find some other line of work, because, you know, we think twenty years is the cutoff, and you got to go. I don't think that's fair. So, you know, I wouldn't be willing to just, you know, not, not reappoint somebody because of the time that they have in, on that seat, regardless, you know, and I think, again, that's why we have these subcommittees that we have, to be able to call those folks in, even if they're not up for reappointment. We have the ability to call them in and say, hey, look, you know, we see the city going in this direction, and we want to get a jump on this, you know, what are your views? Where do you see the city in the next five or ten years? And then, you know, we can make our decisions from that. But, you know, so I think there's, I think there's a forum for that, and I don't think like, you know, waiting until, you know, a big council night to call somebody in, because, because that's all I'm hearing, I don't really hear anything else except that, you know, he's been there too long. I don't, you know, if that's, I haven't heard any other argument, except that he's been here for over twenty years. So, I mean, if it was something that like, you know, he's so out of touch, or she's so out of touch because, you know, the city's going in this direction, and we need to change that, then that's on us. We need to start changing those rules so that the people that are appointed to those committees can adhere to those rules and follow them, like they're doing now. So, I guess that's, that's pretty much all I got. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Council Simonelli, Council Spatafora?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. It's, you know, a lot have been said about Mr. Iovin. First of all, I agree with Council Simonelli, you know, it is refreshing, I think this is a good way to bring in everybody, we've kind of gone full circle of the pendulum, right? At one point, we used to bring everybody in and interview them, and it was a tedious process, right? We often knew them, and the questions were sometimes benign, and we then kind of made it a little bit efficient probably for us, and pushed everybody through, not without, you know, making concerns, and now we're at this point where, I think we agreed twenty years, which, again, I think it's always good to reflect on individuals, but I think twenty years is the number we put in there, I think we should probably do this more frequently, especially for the boards that report to us, and the individuals. This is, just for the benefit of the, of the community, this is a mayor's appointment, it's council confirmation, not that it diminishes this debate, but it's a mayor's appointment. I've known Mr. Iovin for as long as I've been a city councilor, that's how we, I actually know him, and I can say, as a council, has gone to probably just as many of those meetings as anybody on this board, they are tedious to a fault, right? They will debate and debate and debate in a very, I'll be honest with you, balanced way. I mean, you, you, everybody in this, everybody in this council knows eighty percent of the time how somebody's going to vote up there on a development, and the public has to realize you need a majority of the votes to pass a development, and a lot of those individuals agree. More often, they disagree. And, and that different way of thinking makes the projects that go up there and get approved, I think, that much stronger. They put a lot of conditions on there, we're a lot more thorough than we were when I first started. Same thing with the Board of Appeals. Now, if somebody up here, or if the public thinks that they're not agreeing with them, Council Simonelli's point, step up, volunteer, go on those boards, because that's how you make change. But I can tell you, because Council Crowe brought it up, I wasn't going to bring it up, we all know, at the current state, forget the budget, the school funding formula will be the demise of this city, period. And unless the state fixes it, we're screwed. So, we can talk about housing all day, but every time we add more housing with those numbers, it puts us lower and lower, and we need the state to fix that. So, before we even do anything about housing, I will be honest with you, we need to get that fixed. You call it a plea, you call it a beg, you beg, that's fine, because the ultimatum is we cut services or we raise taxes on the housing formula. That's what blows my mind. We know there's a problem, we all know there's a problem, we all know that we got to get a little more commercial space to give some relief to the current residents, and also, I'm not saying we don't build more residential, but we build it in a way that doesn't really hurt that formula, and right now, we can't. Right? So, prudently, I think they've done a very good job as a board, being protective. I also, you know, housing in my perspective is, is a state issue, but the city of Malden always gets pushed around, saying we got to build more. You've seen what's happened in Milton. I will tell you right now, I'm glad they're still in the state, because exactly what's happening to this community is, we're not getting the state to help fund us, but they demand we put more housing in with no money. So, I'm speaking to the residents, it's broken, and there's nothing this body can do, as much as we want to talk, or the planning board, we can't fix that problem. We can make it worse, or we can make it better. This body voted eleven-nothing to do a master plan, we're waiting for, I think, the open meet, I think it's the open meeting requirement, the open meeting report that has to be filed first, and we're going to go out and do RFPs for that, I'm anxious for that, because I believe we have to build up our commercial base. And the reason why I'm talking about this is this is what the planning board enforces, what we set down for them. We have joint planning meetings, they come back with recommendations, everybody on this board knows, we don't often take those recommendations. So, one person's decision on that board has minimal impact to what we do anyways. There's been more times that we've taken that board recommendation, said, thanks, but no thanks, we're going in our own direction, and that's fine, that's independence, that's democracy, because they're a separate board, we're a separate board, so is the planning board. And the idea that we all want to make them look alike is frightening to me, frightening. And I stand here as a father of three, we talk about affordability, we talk about walkability, goes there and checks out the location to see how that goes. Mr. Iovin went to see, for his own eyes, he was probably the only other person besides the traffic officer that took time out of his day to go and see if the location was indeed okay for a handicap sign. I, I don't, I don't remember who else was in there, but at the time, I thought, wow, like, he real, even on the Traffic Commission, he goes and he checks, he dots every i, he dot, he crosses every t with everything that he does. And I think it was Councilor Condon that said he is the least political person. He is. I've, I've called him for questions regarding things that have been on that docket, and he doesn't call you back. He doesn't care. Not, not that I, Chuck, not that, please don't take this the wrong way, but he, he, he's not swayed towards me, or he's not swayed towards you. That's the type of person that we want to have on these boards and commissions, ones that isn't going to get one's particular side, you know, against the other side. He, he votes on his conscience, and he does what he believes is right, and he does his due diligence. And we really, we're, we're very lucky to have somebody like Chuck, who has dedicated a, a long, I was a kid when you got elected on this board, and for you to still be here and still be as passionate as you are about the city of Malden, it's amazing. And I will be in full support of you this evening, and I'm sorry that you've had to go through all of this, but thank you so much.
All right. Is, any councillor, there's no other councillor? Any other councillor want to speak up, or? Okay. I, I actually will then take the mic, or councillor McDonald? Right. Councillor McDonald.
Yeah, I, I just want to note, first of all, I, I do want to appreciate the dedicated service that Mr. Iovin has provided, and I also have been impressed with his diligence in the time that I've been on the council. I just wanted to point out that there's a piece of this conversation that I do think is missing, which is that the planning board is not like the zoning board of appeals, that simply, you know, interprets based on a limited standard and sort of umpires calls balls and strikes. The planning board actually has a planning capacity. Not only does that involve, yes, a master plan, which we have put forward, but that plan, you know, really is run through the planning board. The planning board has to approve it. The planning board has significant influence on the process. That's a policymaking and policy recommending role that becomes the basis, in fact, for all future planning board decisions, when we have a master plan in place, because it states the goals of the city. It states the frameworks that folks are working with. And so, that's a big deal. It's really in the weeds. But a master plan, as I've come to understand, has ripples of impact across generations. And that's also why a planning board makes recommendations on every ordinance that we propose, or actually, ordinances that are changes to zoning can be proposed by residents. I don't know if folks know that, but you can, I think it's like 10 voters can propose a change to the zoning, and then we have to consider it, right? So, the planning board does make recommendations. And my, you know, my concern that I will state is, I do not think that we have a clear and transparent and consistent enough set of standards by which the plan, we, I understand, I'll speak for myself, that I understand on what basis the planning board is giving feedback. Is it in con, is it based on the consensus determined by the members? Is it based on what's in the master plan? Is it based on something else? So, those determinations, yes, are, do not govern what we can do. We can overrule the planning board's recommendations. But my observation is that they carry a lot of weight, because we respect what's happening at the planning board. We respect the expertise that they bring. So, you know, for me, this is actually less a question about the many, many complicated petitions that the planning board receives. I do think that, yes, there are probably some ways that we could, you know, streamline that process for everyone's experience. But nonetheless, my, the point I just want to raise is that members of the planning board have significant planning and policy function. And so, it does actually matter, I think, what people believe and how self-aware they can express that and differentiate the, what they bring to the table about their perspective for the future of the city. So, I just wanted to add that to this conversation. Thank you.
Okay, we have now councillor O'Malley.
I can defer to councillor Spatafora.
For councillor McDonald. I think it's a great point, but councillor, a little background, as far as I've been a councillor, that, that policy decision was run through the Malden Redevelopment Authority, and now the new name is Strategic Planning, right? That's in their name. And even the master plan has always gone through them. So, from my perspective, I don't even know if they thought they were empowered to do such functionality as full planning, because all that planning in my 20 years has never been done at that level. It's been done on the sixth floor by the mayors, not just this current mayor, past mayors, and the Malden Redevelopment Authority, and now the new office. Again, because they've controlled the money for those budgeting, they probably, and I, I don't want to speak for them, they can try all they want, but like, we're working on a master plan, we're not talking to the planning board. We're talking upstairs to Debbie Burke, who runs that for the money, to get that planning. So, that's why I was, when you say that, it sounds great, but in reality, that's not how it's been working. That's all I wanted to say, councillor. Thank you.
You, you want to defer to councillor? Okay, all right. All right. Councillor McDonald.
Yeah, thank you for that. So, to be more precise, master plans are, are required to be put before the planning board. And I think, in practice, yes, our office of Strategic Planning and Community Development is taking the lead on this project, and it also involves significant participation from our city planner, who is not in OSPCD, Michelle Romero, but in fact, is in Inspection Services, and is, and, you know, clerks for the planning board. So, I think there's substantial overlap here. I do fully expect that the planning board will have impact on the master plan process, even if, they are not staff. So, just as we are not staff, you know, we're not, uh, running, running was not a precise enough piece of language.
Councillor O'Malley.
Thank you, thank you. I do want to say that I think that experience is very valuable. You know, now I'm one of the, I'm on the other end of this now, going on in my eighth year. So, I do think, you know, experience is, is important. I'll, I'll just give a couple of examples. You know, George Lasky from the Conservation Commission, I think is, 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 does a yeoman's work on that committee. And one of the reasons being is because he's, he's been here his whole life. He knows where all the streams are that are now covered up by god knows what. And that's the job of the Conservation Commission. And I'll be honest with you, though, whenever, whenever I have a question about something that I care about, when it's related to like, you know, the Conservation Commission, I, I talked to George, and he's able to really kind of let me know what's going on and what the history is. That being said, obviously, the willingness to embrace change in, in a community like Malden that's going through, you know, a, a lot of opportunity to, to grow in positive ways is crucial. You know, the, when it comes to the planning board, I know we talked about kind of like the independence of the planning board. And I think that that, you know, that's to some degree true. But the, the power of the planning board does come from the city council, you know, and, and if, if the city council wanted to, it could, it could take that power back and be the planning board. Obviously, we do not want that, because we don't have the time to, to be the planning board. But I do think that the, you know, the, the earnest dialogue that is happening tonight on both sides of this issue is actually really healthy, and it's probably one of the most respectful and, and, and most, I think, beneficial debates that we've had. I'm actually really proud of the body in terms of how it's, it's, it's behaving and how it's conducting itself. You know, the, the, the planning board is a administrative agency, which has two responsibilities, kind of what councillor McDonald was saying. There's the, you know, administrative, you know, adjudication part of it, where, you know, they take the rules, they apply the rules to a specific project, and they give it a thumbs up or a thumbs down. You know, in, in that area, obviously, if we, if we write the rules, you know, they can encourage commercial development. You know, we had Dartmouth Street. We had, talked about the old, the old CVS. You know, the city, when the times are good, you know, we, we kind of dragged our feet on a lot of that, and, and those projects are, are not getting out of the ground. And I, and I do think that, you know, when it comes to the adjudicatory side of it, we definitely need to make sure that we're trying to get good projects through, not just rubber stamping everything, but when the times are good, let's get the, the shovels in the ground. But, you know, what you're hearing tonight is that there's also the rulemaking function of the planning board. And I do think that that's an area, partly on, because of the fact that its staff was severely cut, is, is not currently being conducted by the planning board. And, you know, councillor McDonald mentioned the Master Plan Steering Committee. That's a perfect example of how the planning board does have this rulemaking function. And I, and I, and I look forward, as, as a member of it, I think with councillor Spatafora, I look forward to working with, with the planning board to, to make that happen. Yeah, when it comes to, to Mr. Iovin, you know, I think, I said this in committee, you know, he's, he's one of the hardest working members of any board and commission. And, and as we all know, you know, we haven't always ended up on the same sides of, of arguments, or of, of debates. And, and that's okay, to be honest with you. I, I can, I can promise to all of the, you know, the members here, even some of the, the more, the newer members, you know, you, you can get things through the planning board. You, you can do things. You know, I have worked with Chuck to pass, you know, some by right development when it comes to commercial zoning. We, we did that a couple of years ago, especially down by the river. In his role on the, the Traffic Commission, you know, Ward Four has rolled out a lot of bike lanes. You know, we have bike lanes on Main Street. We have bike lanes on Florence Street. We have bike lanes everyone knows on Center Street. And, you know, did we do it perfectly? No. But he, we've been able to do that with, with Chuck on the Traffic Commission. It, it, has it been everything? No, it's not been everything. But I, I do think that there's a way to do this in a way that, you know, respects the, the history and experience. But also, you know, the, the body as a whole can communicate to the planning board and to Chuck, and to Mr. Iovin directly, that, you know, when it comes to this rulemaking function in the master plan, let's try to, let's try to do something different there. Let's try to really use all the plans that we've paid hundreds of thousands of dollars doing, and actually get them off the shelf and see how we can actually implement them. So, I can commit, you know, as a member of the Master Plan Steering Committee, to working with Chuck Iovin and the rest of that committee to get that done. I would like to give, you know, Mr. Iovin and, and that committee a chance to, to do that. I don't know where the, the vote is gonna go tonight, but, you know, a middle ground, which I've proposed to a, a couple of people, not a quorum, is that, you know, may, may, maybe there's a way we can, you know, table this discussion for six months to the end of the year, just to give, you know, Mr. Iovin, myself, councillor Spatafora, who was on the Master Plan Steering Committee, a chance to kind of get that process going and see, okay, has the feedback been received? If so, it's a five-year term. It's a, it's a long term. So, the, the, the concern that you hear from some members is that, you know, we have to do a master plan, and this is a commitment for five years. I, I think that it would be an okay thing to do, but if, if there is a little bit, you know, people having concerns about really taking that, that plunge, maybe, maybe doing something like that. Just wanted to put it out there. I hope I don't piss everyone off. But I, I, I feel like it could be a, a middle road. Thank you.
So, I know councillor Semenelli, but councillor Taylor has not spoken, so I'm gonna take councillor Taylor next. Councillor Taylor, please.
Um, I just, what councillor O'Malley just said about possibly tabling, as someone extremely new and not having the chance to work with Mr. Iovin, but coming from a background of management, not having all of the facts about his, his past work, I would like a little bit more time to assess everything before moving forward on a vote like this. I don't know if it's six months that is needed, but maybe tabling it just to get a little bit more information, sounds like a plan to me. So, I would second.
Okay.
A motion from councillor O'Malley.
I'm gonna hold my table motion until everyone talks.
Right, right, okay. Councillor Semenelli, you have, okay.
Oh, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. When did I ever need a mic? So, you know, I, I agree with some, a lot of the things that councillor O'Malley's saying, as far as tonight goes, you know, having this discussion, because it's something that we need to start having more discussion on, you know, what councillor Spatafora has mentioned, and a lot of the other councillors that are sitting up here, on what we're gonna be heading for in the future. So, we, you know, again, I, I gotta go back to what I said before and not being so redundant, but, you know, if we want to start making some changes, we all gotta start, we all gotta start talking to one another. And I don't just mean us on this council, but, you know, us, planning board, you know, the mayor's office, and, you know, strategic planning, on where we all want to see the city going in this master plan. Because, you know, I'm kind of new coming back to the council, too. So, you know, we didn't have a master plan when I left the last time. So, you know, I'm still trying to get caught up on that myself. So, you know, I, I just know that, like, you know, when you get busy in life, and, you know, I'm a ward councillor. So, you know, the, the councillors at large, and, and people that are on the steering committee are pretty much more privy to getting that information, because, you know, I'm a ward councillor. I look out for my neighborhood. You know, I get busy in my life, and I know the direction that I want to see my neighborhood go in. But I, that might not be the case for when we cross over Ferry Street, you go into councillor Crowe's Ward and Ward One. You know, she might want to, and her people might want to see, you know, a little different direction for, for them in there. So, you know, I think that we need to start to really talk more to see what we want the city, where, where the city's gonna go as a whole, especially for the newer councillors that have come on the last couple of years that weren't privy to that. And as far as like, again, and we've got to set those, those rules. We've got to, we've got to put the ordinances in place to help move the planning board in that direction, no matter who's gonna be on that board in the future, to, to the way we like it to be, according to the master plan, right? So, and, and then what I, I would disagree with was to, like, table anything tonight and holding things off tonight, just because on the way it all came about. And I just don't want to start a precedent on, you know, holding board members in abeyance while, you know, we're deciding, you know, on where we want to go and what direction. That should already have been decided upon, and that's our fault for not working a little bit more diligently. And we shouldn't have people that are applying to be on these boards and committees penalized because of that. That's, that's not fair to do that to people. So, I wouldn't be in favor of that. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, councillor Semenelli. Councillor Linehan.
Thank you. I know this is my second time. I appreciate the opportunity to speak again. I'm leaning towards being in favor of tabling this, to be able to have a little bit more time for the newer councillors or those who feel like they want a little more thought. I, I hear councillor Semenelli's point about, we're sort of delay, delay, delaying, but I can't reiterate enough that this is not a personal issue. This is about getting on the same page about where the city's going in the future. I have, I mean, I, obviously, we go to Board of Appeal, we go to Planning, CONCOM, CPC. I, as councillors, we go to all of these. Sometimes you vehemently disagree with what that board decides. Sometimes you get another crack at it, and sometimes you don't. It depends on how the ordinances are written and whether it's a special permit. There's all different scenarios where we sometimes get another bite at it, and sometimes we don't. Regardless of that, we all have to be able to work together. And so, however this vote proceeds, I think what we need to do is to be in conversation so that we're rowing in the same direction. That's really what I'm hearing that everybody wants here. I, you know, I hate that this is coming across as being on one person's shoulders, but at the same time, as the chair of the board, this is our opportunity to have a serious conversation. And so, I hope that where we go from here is to, again, come together, look at the things that the city is facing, and find a way to not be at odds with one another, and to be able to work, whether it's policy development on our side, on the board's side. I think we've established that there's a lot of different ways that we can get to that change, that it doesn't just have to be generated through us, or OSPCD, or the mayor's office. So, so let's do it. Let's have that conversation, and let's, it's gonna be a hard conversation, because there's no easy answers. As councillor Spatafora said, we can't just add one type of, you can't just add housing. We need the commercial, and there's gonna be no overnight fix to the school issues. So, we have tough conversations ahead of us, and we need to all be working together. So, I, this actually isn't my paper. I'm not the chair or the vice chair, but it's sort of defaulted to me because our chair is our council president, and our vice chair, you know, has a relative on the board. So, as the person shepherding this, I want to just indicate I'm in favor of the notion to table. I don't know what the right timeframe is, but I want to make sure that we really handle this thoughtfully and do the right thing here, and aren't holding this up, but also aren't sort of sacrificing one person, when really the larger goal is bigger than just the seat or the, or the individual.
All right. Thank you, councillor Linehan. Councillor Sika.
Thank you again for the second time. So, I'm a, I, I don't even know what to say, because I'm kind of a little confused, yeah. So, we're, we're talking about tabling a mayoral appointment, which I think everybody up here is forgetting. This is a mayoral appointment. This is Gary's appointment with a confirmation from the city council. And one of the reasons is, because with no, with no disrespect, councillor Taylor, you're new.
And one of the reasons is because, with no disrespect, Councilor Taylor, you're new, so you need to get, you need to get caught up with knowing him, but we might as well not reappoint anybody. Why are we going to single out Chuck with his reappointment because you haven't got to know him over the last three months, when you've probably voted to reappoint other people over the last three months in basically the same position as, or situation as Chuck? And if I was Chuck, I don't think I'd blame him if he didn't want to wait six months. So, some of you may want to table him for the next six months. If I was Chuck, I might tell, I might not be interested in waiting. He deserves to be confirmed, he is a mayoral appointment. This has nothing to do with us. And I think us, one of the reasons of tabling him because there's a new City Councillor on the floor is absolutely ludicrous, because we shouldn't be reappointing anybody if that's the case. Everybody from here on out until a certain date should be tabled for their reappointment until new councillors get to know them. I reappointed new councillors, many new councillors, when I first started in 2014, and I didn't have a problem with it. I didn't know half of the reappointments that I was reappointing, but I reappointed them and I got to know them along the way. If we don't reappoint Chuck's confirmation or appointment, excuse me, then you'll never get to know him because he may leave. So we won't even have to worry about that because he'll be gone. And I think that that is a huge disservice to the City of Malden if we were to let Chuck go. So, I am not in support of tabling this paper, I think we need to vote on it one way or another. The outcome is not going to change in six months, trust me when I tell you it's not going to change.
All right. Councilor Spatafora and Councilor Taylor.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, my challenge with the table motion is similar, I think, to everybody else. In six months, I feel bad for Mr. Iovin, because if you told me, it's basically he's on a performance plan. If you don't vote the way that I think you should vote for the next six months, I'm not going to support you in six months, that's what I'm telling you. And I don't want a chairman or anybody on a board having to worry about a vote when they should be independent and vote the way they should be. If you don't like that, that's fine, vote him down, move on to the next one. But I, that's the way I feel this is coming across, is six months. In terms of Mr. O'Malley, I look forward to working with him on, Council O'Malley, excuse me, working on that, but it's the open meeting space plan we have to, we have to, we have to get done first on the state level, and we're probably not going to have the number for the plan, for the master plan, for another six weeks based on talking to Debbie Burke and the staff. I do want to point one thing, and I'm not trying to go after any councillor, don't take this the wrong way, Councilor McDonald, but when we say the Planning Board, right, I understand what they're deeded with, but I pulled out the 2004, 2024 proposed budget, don't ask me why I'm carrying it, especially in paper, right? The Planning Board for the public, right, because this is where, this is, I'm saying, I agree with you, but this is where it falls on us and as a community. So the Board of Appeal, their total appropriation, which was budgeted, was $16,510. The Planning Board total was $28,080. That includes $13,680 for salary. Granted, it doesn't include Michelle Romero's salary in there, so let's say it's another 100, that's 13,000, that's 14,000. Planning, advertisement, we spent more money on advertising than we did on the stipings for them. So now we're going to put, and again, I'm not saying Councilor McDonald, because that is governed by what we say. We're going to have them at $13,000, and all professionals, we all know there's an architect on there, Mr. Iovin has another job, they all have day jobs, to craft this with that stipend. It's not fair to them. And again, I am not picking on the other department, I personally think we need more money based on some of the numbers I've seen, planning, everybody agrees we need better planners, right? Strategic planning and community development, salaries, $867,000. I'm not saying they're not worth it. What I'm saying is they have a lot more resources to help us, and that's why we go to them. That's why we go to them. Economic stipends, $9,600. Office supply, $7,500. Professional services, $104,000. Consultants, $50,000. Printing, $5,000. Economic and development communication, $20,000. Engineering and design, $40,000. Equipment lease, $10,000. Conferences, which they go to a lot of great conferences on planning, $10,000. What we need to do is get together as a community and have this department work with our planning department and work to craft that. You can't expect that Planning Board or Mr. Iovin at $15,000, that's not, that's the total stipend, to do the work of something that has over a million dollars. That is, you know what that is? That is archaic, and that would be ridiculous in any organization. That's why I say, I agree with Councilor McDonald, that's under their mission statement, we haven't provided them the resources to do that in a manner, us. We fund it, so we should do a better job of funding that and working with that board and the office upstairs, strategic planning, to craft better rules. That's my point. I just, I get frustrated because some of this is on us, I take responsibility, but there's an awful lot of money there we could use to make it better ordinances, and I look forward to working with everybody going forward. Thank you.
So, thank you, Councilor Spatafora. We've had a lot of discussion on this, I have Councilor McDonald. I think, you know, one of the things I see is that temperature's rising, I think we had a good discussion, so I would like to, Councilor McDonald will recognize you, and then I would like to have, say something, and then we'll go forward on things from there.
Yeah, thank you. You know, let me just say that I, I think we're talking about different things here, I really do. Obviously, our Office of Strategic Planning and Community Development hires folks with backgrounds in urban planning and in planning development. That's why, yes, we pay them to do that work. I am not trying to ask the Planning Board to take on more, I'm trying to have us collectively recognize the power that the Planning Board does already have. And I will tell you that I have a, I have a hard, I frankly have a hard time supporting Planning Board reappointments at this point, when I feel like we have not been able to have a conversation with the board and its leadership. So, I hadn't heard about a tabling idea, I agree with you that a six-month-to-a-year table feels like a probation. But I think that if there is a way to be able to have more of a strategic conversation about how we're going to interact through the master plan process, through a policy development process that has some honesty about what we're all bringing to the table and what our respective roles are and how we understand them, I would find that very refreshing, and it would help me get to a better position on this vote, which I don't think has to end up being, you know, incredibly divisive and damaging. So, that's where I'm at in this, and I will defer to you, Council President.
Yeah, well, thank you. I mean, this has been a very respectful dialogue, I think it's actually changed my point of view on this a bit tonight, so I think that's good. I mean, one of the things I think is a challenge for any organization is to change leadership. I mean, and especially when you have someone who's been so dedicated as Chuck, and we hear how diligent he is and how committed he is to community, I mean, that's not easy. I mean, right now, the standard for typical reappointments from the mayor is, did someone show up to the meeting or not? I mean, that's a pretty low standard, and I think Chuck, we wish everybody was on these boards was meeting the standard that you're setting for yourself. So I think that's, we've heard that very much, and I think, but, you know, I am torn here because there is this administrative part the Planning Board plays of being diligent on the rules that councillors either on this council or former councillors have put into place, and that is a responsibility that we do delegate. The dilemma for the Planning Board is they are of two minds. We also, under law, they are part of the process to look at opportunities. So I think, you know, in the committee meeting, I, you know, asked Chuck a couple of things, and I asked him about this issue of, you know, we, you know, Chuck had been, you know, when I got elected back in 2018, I sat down with Chuck and said, you know, what's going on with the master plan? And, you know, it was almost there, we didn't have a transportation section, that was a gap, it hadn't advanced, but I think Chuck gave a very fair answer, like, hey, you know, when, you know, back, and I remember, you know, Ed Terrell, who was the planner before we gutted our planning staff, we had like three planners that did that. And, you know, now we have Michelle Romero, whose focus is primarily on the administrative part of that. And she does, when we have the planning stuff, like the MBTA community stuff, she's very diligent. So Chuck gave a very, very fair answer, and that was the type of thing where I realized, like, you know, it's not on one person of what, where we need to go. And, but, you know, I think I did also ask a question about opportunity and what, and that was the type of thing, I'm someone who, you know, hey, I had the vision for the bike trail, and it's, I mean, I want to encourage more of that, and as we face climate change, we face a transportation system, we don't know what things are going to be out there 20 years from now, so we need flexibility. And we have housing that's just ridiculous, and to me, the thing about housing is, is that it's not about more housing, it's about keeping Malden a community where someone on a, you know, good, middle-class income can buy a home and raise their family and live here, buy or rent or whatever, so that's really where I come from. So that's, those are the challenges we face. And, you know, one of the things you notice, Councilor O'Malley mentioned, the Master Plan Steering Committee, and it made me think and look back, and in thinking about that, I mean, it reflects my feeling of the opportunity we need to pursue as a community, that the next opportunity, you know, we've done, and Chuck's been involved in this, we sit in the City Hall, I mean, that was a huge thing that many councillors and Mayor Christiansen to reopen Pleasant Street, sort of to make up for that mistake in the 1970s. That was a lot of things, and so that was, you know, credit to the people who are on the, you know, my name's on the plaque there, but a lot of other people on this committee did a lot more work on that stuff. And, you know, Exchange Street, I think that's been a nice improvement, that used to be a backwater street. So, I think the next opportunity is Center Street, and that is at the intersection of Ward One and Ward Four. And so I thought it was important on the Master Planning Steering Committee to appoint Peg as, you know, Chair, you know, as the lead representative of the committee, because that's, most of that's south and it's Ward One, and, but I thought, you know, Councilor O'Malley, it's important to have the Ward Four councillor, and then Councilor Spatafora, who's spoken so passionately, and I think the MBTA community zoning stuff would have really screwed us if Councilor Spatafora had not spoken up about the need to preserve our commercial stuff there. So, that was the vision I saw as this council, the leadership that I thought to take that thing. And hearing tonight that Councilor O'Malley is willing to work with Councilor Crow and Councilor Spatafora to give that opportunity to, for a period, to say, let's see how this thing works, let's get the master plan rolling, under the leadership, you know, the leadership of Councilor Crow, Councilor O'Malley, Councilor Spatafora, and Mr. Iovin, to see how that works, and let's see how that works. And so, I wasn't necessarily open to the tabling thing, but I think that that's the type of thing, I think it is the opportunity, we've had a good dialogue, it's a way to step forward, and I don't, you know, I think it's the type of thing that, you know, if we get that master plan rolling and it seems to be an open process and we're having that great conversation, because I feel like it's, you know, the challenge of, you know, Chuck, I mean, you look at the Patriots this year, they made the choice of letting Bill Belichick go. I mean, here's a guy who's won six Super Bowl rings, and you can't say that guy's not been more dedicated in what he's doing. So, at some point, you have to do, make hard choices about your change of leadership. So, I mean, I think the challenge is we, maybe we're a nine-and-seven team in our planning, and that's not all on, you know, the head coach or whatever, so. So how do we get better? I think that's the type of thing, I think that that's something I'm willing to, you know, let's put this aside for now, take, see what happens, and under the leadership, so I'm supportive, and then I will leave it, and Councilor Crow, you have your light, and then Councilor...
For the second time. The, so, thank you. So if, you know, if we do this tabling for six months, so what is the, what is the outcome? What is the goal at the end? Is it so Councilor Taylor gets to understand Chuck and know Chuck and work with Chuck? Is it that we start this conversation, if it's me, Councilor O'Malley, and Councilor Spatafora? I could tell you that we'll definitely, the three of us, get down and say, let's get this master plan going. Is it that we have a robust conversation in the master planning process? Well, I think we can all guarantee, I'll guarantee that myself, to put my effort forward, I think my fellow councillors will do as well. So, I'm not sure what the six months says, you know, that there was a great conversation, that it was a, or is it so someone gets to know him, or is it, again, I think it is kind of holding off to say, well, you voted, you didn't vote, I didn't like your votes, so now I'm not, I'm not going to do it. So, it seems to me that it is about the master planning process, and I think there's three councillors here that are committed to making sure that that moves forward.
Yeah, I'll have to echo Councilor Crow's sentiment there. It has absolutely nothing to do with, I think, the votes of the Planning Board, I think it would be inappropriate to evaluate any member of the Planning Board or the Planning Board itself based on how it's voting. I do think it's purely on the master plan process. I think that six months puts us to the end of September, which I think is a perfect, we should be able to make some progress by then. I'm committed, and even progress could just be, you know, putting it out to RFP or reviewing the successes of what we've done on the last master plan. And I know there's been a lot of hard work done in that Master Plan Steering Committee, I don't know when the last time it's met, maybe, you know, during the pandemic, a lot of things kind of got, you know, off track, let's get it back on track. I appreciate the willingness of the council, and I appreciate, you know, Chuck's willingness to work on that. I would move that we table this for six months, as discussed.
All right, so we have a tabling motion for, do we want to say end of September, like September 30th? Do we want to just, let me look at the council calendar, whatever, so.
It'd be last Tuesday in September.
So our last council meeting is, we have a council meeting on September 24th, so why don't we table it until September 24th? So, that sounds like reasonable, all right. So we have a motion to table this paper until September 24th, seconded by Councilor Taylor. So, any discussion on the motion? Otherwise, we will take a roll call on the motion. Okay, Councilor Semenelli, yeah, on the motion to table.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, again, I just think it just sends a bad message to people moving in the future for these committees and appointments, that we can't, we can't get anybody to apply for them. And I think that if you, you know, because some people are shy, some people aren't always like us, that, you know, we're not shy, we're, you know, politicians, I guess, so, you know, reluctantly not shy. But there are people that, you know, are shy, and, you know, they do want to serve and do their due diligence and show their talents off and their passions off on these boards and these committees, but, you know, they don't necessarily, you know, want to go through this rigor mortem, you know, just to be appointed. And again, we've got to keep in mind that it is the mayor's appointment, and, you know, I just think that we're going to have a hard time finding people to fill in on these boards if you table, especially that long. So, I just, I just ask you to kind of really thread cautiously when we're tabling board members at this phase. Thank you, Mr. President.
All right, Councilor Linehan, and then, I mean, everybody if you want to speak wants on this, but, so, yeah, but...
I'm sorry. For the third and final time. I just want to, I just want to appreciate the conversation we've had, and also to reiterate that my support for the tabling motion is because I think this actually could change my vote, to Councilor Seega's point, we all want to do the right thing here, and I think we need to think about the message that it sends in recruitment, not just this process, which is thoughtful and unprecedented, but we've handled this very well. I hope we don't do this a lot, but I think that we're getting to a good conclusion here, and I want us to think carefully about the message it sends when there isn't a lot of turnover on boards. It doesn't mean that we're saying, it's not ageist, it's not you hit an expiration date, but when there are newer members of the community that might be interested, that work in the field of planning or architecture, and they want to get involved, and they see boards that don't have a lot of turnover, that's a disincentive as well, just as much as what we've done here tonight is, and I'm just so mindful of that, because none of us are going to be around forever. We need to be recruiting and encouraging new blood and new voices to come in, and I think part of that is how we handle these appointments. So, I apologize for speaking three times, but thank you.
For, I, if, I don't see any more lights, so we will take a roll call vote on the motion to table this paper till September 24th.
Councilor Condon.
No.
Councilor Crow.
No.
Councilor Linehan.
Yes.
Councilor McDonald.
Yes.
Councilor O'Malley.
Yes.
Councilor Seega.
No.
Councilor Semenelli.
No.
Councilor Spatafora.
No.
Councilor Taylor.
Yes.
Councilor Winslow.
Yes. So that motion does not pass?
No.
So, what, it was five to five, right?
No, it was...
Five to five, yeah.
Five to five, yeah.
It was a council.
Okay. All right, that's, check... All right, that's, check clerk, what was the vote?
One, two, three, four, five, yes. One, two, three, four, five, no.
So the motion to table does not pass, so we'll entertain another motion? All right, let's see. Counsel O'Malley, you have another motion.
I, I do think that, that, the, the middle ground here, to be honest with you, would, would, would beat a table. I, I under-
All right, so we got to make a motion-
I, I, I under-
That has been denied. So, okay, but all right, we offered it.
No, I know, I, I know, I know. I, no, I know.
Okay, all right.
But I think that we've heard really good, I mean, is, is, with a shorter period, I mean, it's weird, because that's, it's September is when we're back from summer recess.
It's not going to change, guys, seriously. You're getting a dead loss.
Okay, all right, let's, please, ask for the mic.
Oh, yeah.
Does anybody have a motion? So we can't table? We can't go forward with, this is, we have one more, one more piece of business before we can adjourn, so, uh, we, we, we can table this for five minutes while we take up the other piece of business, or, or we have a motion? Counsel Seika, you have a motion?
I make a motion that we do not reappoint Chuck Iovin to the planning board.
Counsel Seika makes a motion to not reappoint Mr. Iovin. Is there any, we've had pretty much discussion on this.
I'll say it.
So Counsel Seika is, motion is seconded by Counsel Spatafora to not reappoint.
Not, I'm not going to talk in the negative, so you want to deny the appointment.
Deny the appointment, deny Chuck's appointment.
Okay. All right. So is there any discussion, further discussion on that motion? Counsel O'Malley?
Can we just clarify what the two votes do? What would a no vote do, and what would a yes vote do?
A yes vote would be to deny his appointment, and a no vote would be not to.
So a yes vote would reject, and a no vote would confirm.
Yep.
Motion to reject the appointment, a yes vote would be to reject.
If you do not want to vote for Chuck, you vote yes. If you do want to vote for Chuck, you vote no, to be reappointed.
Okay. What? All right, let's see. Counsel McDonald? All right.
So my question is, does the framing of this question matter from a procedural perspective? Right? Like, there's, I mean, you phrase this in the negative, so let's say it's tied. If, in the event of a tie, what is the outcome?
Can't bring it up, it fails, and you can't bring it up for another six months, at least. But, but it, it's the, it's a mayoral appointment, people. He could do whatever he wants. You're missing the point of this appointment. You're missing it. Whether he gets reappointed or not, he can stay. We're wasting time here. We're wasting time. This is ridiculous. Move my motion. Motion to not reappoint Mr. Iovin to the planning board.
Okay. All right, so, um, that is the motion? So, uh, take the roll.
So on Counsel Seika's motion to reject the appointment of Chuck Iovin, seconded by Counsel Spatafora, a yes vote is to reject, a no vote is to confirm. Counsel Condon.
No.
Counsel Crowe.
No.
Counsel Linnahan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Present.
Uh, Counsel O'Malley, um, under our rules, you, you cannot vote present. It's not allowed.
Oh, that's a terrible-
You're not allowed to vote present. You are here to vote, one way or the other. There, there, under our rules, you are out of order. You can pass, you, there, you, you're not allowed to vote present.
There's the rules.
Let's, let's pull out the rule book here, but, let's see. All right, five-minute recess, all right, so-
Oh, my God, are you kidding me? You can't take a recess in the middle of a vote!
In the middle of a vote?
All right, well, I have a point of order, so-
In the middle of a vote!
But-
I don't know if it's in the rule book, I never heard it, so I'm going to, I want to-
It's allowed?
Present, present, yeah, present's called recess, but-
All right, I'm, I'm calling a, to research the rule of whether-
This is not happening in the middle of a vote, this is ridiculous.
Okay. I'm not the House-
Present goes to the prevailing side, so he's only going to screw himself. You should have just unvoted present.
So, so this is Rule 18.03. A request to be excused from voting must be made before calling of the roll begins and shall be decided without debate. So, so he, he can't. That's, that's Rule 18.03, so I, I am-
1801 also says, except when excluded by interest, every member, including the president, shall vote on all questions.
So Counsel O'Malley needs to vote, one way or the other. That's not a vote.
Cannot rule vote.
That is our rule. That is not, no, that has been there. So that has been there.
But a lot of them get away with that for years.
I'm, I haven't been council president, so-
No, it hasn't been there.
It says 18.0, members to vote unless excused. That has been, I, let's see.
That was just with the new change.
Let's see if I have the old rule, I have the old rule book right here.
I'm pretty sure that was just with the new change.
Rule, rule.
I think this one was already there, this is the new one Barbara made, because people kept leaving the meeting when they didn't want to vote.
It's, it's, it's exactly the same. Rule 18, members to vote unless excused. This is, I have the 2018, so, so, so Counsel O'Malley, I'm not letting you duck here.
So do we get the vote or is it no excuse or no?
Is that too late?
It's too late, because once the roll call-
It's a no right now.
He's asking, if you ask to be excused, is that a vote, or does the president-
But it says, a request to be excused for voting must be made before, before calling a roll begins.
Which is what Karen-
So the-
Is that a vote, though?
That, he's talking about, like Karen just recused herself, and you all voted on that, to let her be excused from the vote, right? So that's 1803.
So-
But 1801 says that every member, unless you're excluded by interest, like Karen was, Counsel Cologne Hayes, every person must, must vote.
Listen, I agree, I think it's great. He voted present.
What?
That present is not, not a vote. So I'm not accepting present.
He might not come back.
So it's very clear, we've had a, members to vote.
Yeah, let's say.
Members to vote unless excused.
Yeah, I voted.
Present is not a vote. Present is not a vote.
That's not true.
We have a or nay.
Does it say that?
That, I, it doesn't say, present is not a vote. That is my, you can, uh, is-
Come on.
Okay.
Come on, what's the point of having this?
I'm saying, I, I'm council president, I'm saying, I, a present is not a vote. You're, you get elected to vote. All right, so Counsel O'Malley votes no?
I don't know.
All right, keep going? All right.
I'm sorry, did you say?
He said no.
No.
Okay.
Counsel Seika. So again, this is yes to reject, no to confirm.
No.
Counsel Semenelli.
Counsel Semenelli, whoa.
Yes to reject the confirmation.
Oh, sorry.
Or no to confirm the confirmation.
Say it again, I, say it again, one more time.
Well, it, it's, no is to-
A yes vote, okay, hang on.
He's telling her.
So a no vote is not to reject it. That's, it's not to accept it.
We're voting whether or not we want to confirm the appointment or reject the appointment. If you vote yes.
That is different, I-
I got you.
You are rejecting the appointment.
I got you.
I, I just, I have to say, the interpretation, Counsel Seika's motion was to-
Reject.
To reject. It didn't say that a, a no vote would be to confirm, it was to reject it. So, so no vote just means we have to take another motion.
Steve, don't get it, don't make him listen.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's not. You made clear, this, the, the motion before us is to whether, to reject the, the reconfirmation.
Yes, so a yes is to reject, and no is to-
And no is, is to not-
Yeah, to not reject. She's actually-
And not rejecting is not a confirmation, so, so not rejecting is not a confirmation. So, yeah, not rejecting is not, so, yeah, so just be clear. Yeah, no. All right.
Counsel Spatafora? Counselor Taylor?
Yep.
Counsel President Winslow?
Uh, yes. So the vote?
So that fails.
But Counsel O'Malley votes.
So it'd no.
No. So the, we have not rejected the reappointment, but we have not, we have not reconfirmed either. So, all right, Counsel O'Malley?
It's now done, you can now have another motion.
No, we, we have not, we have not voted on whether to reappoint or not. That's our, our responsibility, so that-
You just took a motion.
You made a motion.
What?
You just took a motion for the paper, that was the vote.
It was to reject him, it failed.
Right.
We, we didn't reappoint him.
We didn't reject, we didn't reject him.
So now what? The next motion's going to do the same thing, people. Do you really want to go there right now?
Well, I'm just saying, we have not voted to reappoint him yet, so we have only voted not to reject him. So we have, we have, the paper is still before us.
Oh, my God. You don't have, you didn't have a motion to confirm the appointment.
I know, and so, so, so-
I feel like that was the final action.
So if-
It's the final action.
So the final action would be not to, no reappointment, because we have not voted to reappoint him.
It failed.
But we have not reappointed him either. We have not, affirmatively, we voted to reappoint him, so, 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 yeah. I just, we have not taken a vote to reappoint, so there's, the reappointment fails, so, so I don't-
Isn't our clerk a parliamentarian?
Yeah, but-
I mean, I'm of the opinion that you, you made a motion, you took a vote on the motion, and so it failed. He's not been reappointed. You-
But not been rejected.
Nothing.
He, he's not been rejected.
I mean, confirmed or, um- Right, but once you take a vote on a paper, that's the final action of that paper. You don't get to keep taking votes once something has been closed. It's my understanding of it, and-
But we have not voted on the reappointment, then, so-
You didn't have a motion for reappointment. I, I, I made the motion not to reconfirm Chuck. That was the motion, that's why I reversed it and voted the opposite. The paper, this is, this is a new point. Next order of business.
So Counsel O'Malley, will you reconsider? All right, okay, all right. But, what?
We can't, we're going to have a six-months.
What?
But nothing was going to happen. You can't table it, you've already voted.
We can't table, we've already, we can't take enough table, I think we, so, but-
That motion, that motion failed. The paper's still on.
So-
Or we can, or we can move to the next, the next-
So I mean, I, I think the reality is, is that the reappointment has not been approved.
So it's a whole load of-
And the, this-
You can't keep voting until you get enough each month.
Right, it's, it's the mayor's appointment, so it's a whole-
The motion failed.
So now we're going to do a motion to-
The motion failed, so we have not acted on the paper, because the motion on the paper failed. We, we have not moved the paper.
If we've taken our final action on it, it doesn't matter.
It's, it, it's not a final action, because we have not passed a motion.
Can I take, I'm sorry, council president, I think I need to take control of the meeting for a moment.
All right, sure.
I apologize, but let's take a minute to just review what we have here.
At this point, I'm making the ruling that we have no motion that has been passed. The paper is failing, and I, I, under our rules, you, members have to appeal my ruling. That's Rule 20, so, yeah, no. I'm just saying, I, I, as a, as the president, I'm making a ruling. My ruling is that, um, no, but as I say, our rules, any member may appeal my ruling, but my ruling is that we have not passed a paper. We only rejected something. So that is my ruling. What? No. No, I'm, well, not. I'm just saying, I am, under the Rule 20, if you want to, if, if people want to appeal my ruling, then you can appeal it.
We have a motion.
And we have to vote. My ruling right now is we have not passed, we have not acted on the motion, we only rejected. We have not made a motion. So let's, I'm waiting for the parliamentarian, but I, ultimately, I am the president, I make the ruling, and you can appeal it, so, so. No, no, I am the president. Under our rules, I make the ruling, you have to appeal it. She's, that, that is, so, yeah. Yeah.
This is ridiculous.
Yeah, so-
It's ridiculous.
You appeal it, the council has to take a vote on it. So, yeah.
This is not changing anything.
And I'm just saying, my interpretation of our rules is that, and, and with the motion that was made, we did not act to reappoint.
I have a motion to have a table, or a law, and that would be that-
We have not taken any action. The motion that was presented was not acted on, so-
So what happens if we make them, if somebody makes a motion to confirm him, and that gets, um, that, that is five-five. We have another one?
No, in, in that case, it's, yeah, no.
It's ridiculous.
And no, in that, that case, we have, we've rejected it, so, yeah, so, all right.
What's happening now is that, you know, there's a motion, there's a law, because on the law, the president cannot debate on the issue.
I'm not debating the issue, I'm making a ruling here. I'm, as president, the, I'm making a ruling on the rules, and this- I'm, I'm not saying, I'm just waiting for Carol Land to get up here, but, okay, okay, all right. All right. Can I have the, um, the, the clerk in our legal office make a recommendation on how to proceed? All right, uh, let's see, let me get you up here. What is your advice?
What's the, what, what's the question?
So the question is, we, we just took a motion to the, to whether we would reject the reappointment. That was the motion. That motion failed. What is the status of the paper if the motion on a paper does not pass? So.
I think the.
What must agree that we think the paper is dead?
So, the paper is dead, so that means the reappointment is dead as well? Because then, then we cannot act on the reappointment, so if the paper is dead, then the reappointment is not made, right? Is, wouldn't that be an interpretation? That, that paper before us is to reappoint. So, if the paper is dead, the reappointment does not happen?
I don't know if the appointment does not happen, because I'm not sure if. I'm not sure if he was supposed to be confirmed back in March, on March 1st. And he wasn't, there's, so there's a holdover for, from March 1st, first, for 30 days. And if he wasn't reappointed then, then I'm not sure if there is a, that there is a hold.
Oh, oh, sorry. It went off again, sorry. All right, go ahead, yes, sorry, it went off.
I don't know if there is any rule that if there is no, there is a vacancy, whether it's because someone is not appointed or reappointed, if that person holds over in that position until it's filled.
I tried to find that in the MGL today, and it was not specific that I could find. But without, without it being said, usually our board members, it is understood that they will remain, retain the seat until their successor is appointed.
So, the interpretation of the, the result of the rejection, of the rejection, is that the paper, uh, there's the report, that does not interpret that as a reappointment, it's just the paper is, is, is dead. Is that, that's basically what you're saying, is that we have not reappointed Mr. Iovon, and we can't take further action on it?
That's, I understand.
All right.
That's what we, both of us understand.
All right.
Um, Counsel President.
So, okay. So, oh, so, point of information, so, okay. Oh, sorry, Counsel Condon, yes, sorry.
Although, all right. Prior to you making this decision on the paper, we had a motion put forth by Counsel Seminelli to delta the ruling of the chair, and I seconded it. And we're being told that we aren't allowed to do that. That was before you made your interpretation.
So, we were deliberating and didn't hear what your motion was, or why it was.
I, I'm just saying, under, under Rule 20, it says, the, I mean, members may appeal a president's ruling, so I was ruling that we had not, uh, you know, the interpretation was we had rejected, uh, a motion to reject. Right, but that was ultimately what we did. But, um, the motion did not pass, so, but we had not acted on the reappointment, so. So, okay. So, that, that motion, my interpretation is we had not acted on the reappointment. Okay, we're, we're still. Yeah, well, that. Well, that's another paper, but it's okay, all right, so. All right. All right. Any, so, Counsel Seminelli, do you want to appeal the, the ruling? So, he's withdrawn his appeal, so I would say we're on to the next order of bill, bit, business, that a reappointment is not passed. All right. All right. Next order of business? Seven, seventy-seven, twenty-four.
Oh, I forgot about that.
Okay, good. I really. All right.
Paper seventy-seven dash twenty-four, mayoral appointment, Andrew Scarono, 21 Magnolia Street, Malden, as a member of the Public Works Commission, to fill the unexpired term of Bill Coleman, said term to expire March 1, 2026, and to commence upon confirmation by the city council.
All right, we have Counselor Hayes, welcome back. Counsel Colin Hayes for the committee. We are on the final paper of the evening. Okay, okay, so. On, uh, so we are on the paper related to appointment of Andy Scarono, so, could you, uh, Counselor Hayes for the committee, uh, just, uh, the action we took in personal appointments on this, could you discuss it? Or if, or, all right. We're at paper seventy-seven, twenty-four. All right. We've, we've already accepted the, the committee reports on these.
Oh, okay, yes. All right, so we did need with, um, Mr. Scarono.
Oh, sorry. Sorry. All right. Counselor Colin Hayes, sorry.
Okay, thank you. So, the committee met with, um, Mr. Andrew Scarono, and, uh, we had a nice, um, some, some talk with him. He's been in the city for a long time, and had a lot of, uh, his experience, I remember reading his resume was tremendous, um, for the role he was going for, so we, um, it was a, I believe it was unanimous report favorably out to the committee of the whole.
Any discussion on the, uh, the appointment of Mr. Scarono? Okay, um, let, Counsel Seminelli, do you have a comment, or?
Wanted to say that, uh, you know, I think, uh, Andy Scarono is the perfect person for this job. He lives in my community, I've known him for a long time, and he does a great job. He's worked for the Malden redevelopment, uh, years, for years, uh, helping people rehab their homes, so, he knows what it takes, so thank you.
All right. So, Counsel O'Malley, so Counsel Seminelli, uh, in favor, uh, make a motion, uh, for the appointment, seconded by Counsel O'Malley. Clerk will call the roll.
Counsel Colton Hayes.
Yes.
Counsel Condon.
Yes.
Counsel Crowe.
Yes.
Counsel Lenihan.
Yes.
Counsel McDonald.
Yes.
Counsel O'Malley.
Yes.
Counsel Seega. Counsel Seminelli.
Yes.
Counsel Spatafora.
Yes.
Counsel Taylor. Counsel President Winslow.
Yes. All right, that appointment has been confirmed. That is, the docket is clear.
Right.
Would anybody like to have personal privilege? Do we have, um, I have, what? Okay, uh, well, we're gonna, we have some personal privilege, all right, so we have, uh, let's see, I thought I just did, um. All right, well, I'll go with, uh, Counsel Seminelli, do you have personal privilege, or no?
Um, no, I don't, I, no, I'm good, thank you.
All right, all right, so then Counsel Seega.
I was gonna say, I had my light on first. I was so quick to, to hit that button. Okay. I did think this was gonna be a very early meeting, but I guess not. I was hoping to be out of here by eight, but. The meetings that you think are gonna be the shortest are never short, and the meetings that you think are gonna be long up here are never long. It, it's like opposite. We had such a short docket this evening, I thought it was gonna be a fairly easy meeting, but anyway. Personal privilege, this Saturday, March 31st, right? Is it the 31st, the 30th? What day is?
30th.
I don't even, okay, so, East is on the 31st, thank you. Counsel Spatafora and I, along with the Malden Rec Department, will be hosting our annual egg hunt at Linden Park at Hunting Field at 10:00 a.m. As, I didn't check today, but as of yesterday, we had 168 kids registered for this event. It's, uh, if you haven't registered yet, then please get on there to do so. If by chance you're not sure, we, it, it's more of like, we need to make sure we have enough of, last year, we ran out of toys for the first time ever, and I want to make sure that I did not do that again, so, if you didn't register, it's not the end of the world. We're not gonna, you know, shy you away from the event, it's just to make sure that we have enough, um, gifts and everything for the kids once they have a visit with the Easter Bunny, so, if anybody wants to come, it's the Saturday, the 30th, Linden Park at Hunting Field. Say that five times fast. 10:00 a.m. We hope to see you there. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Counsel Lenihan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just real quick, uh, on Saturday, April 27th, we're gonna be doing an Earth Day themed park cleanup at Felsmere Pond. Um, that's gonna start at 9:30 and go till 11:30, and we're gonna meet at the picnic benches on Savin Street. Welcome to have anybody, any member of the public. We're doing this in partnership with the Girl Scouts, and also, um, a crew of volunteers from the Bridge Recovery Center, which I'm so thrilled about, so come on down, help us clean the pond, if we get a really big crew, we're gonna be distributing people out to, um, Amridge, and also the cemetery, both of which really, really need a cleanup as well. So, again, that's Saturday, the 27th, at 9:30. And then, um, really exciting news, tomorrow, in the morning, we're gonna be breaking ground on the Malden Hospital, uh, the new behavioral health facility. So, 10:00 a.m., that's also open to the public, would love to see everybody there. I feel all the support that you've all given me over the years on this project, so I know those that can't be there in person are no doubt there in spirit, but this has been an exciting project, obviously, for the last couple of years, and a longstanding goal, just for the administration, and for our council, and really for our whole community, to have some redevelopment at that site, and I'm just thrilled to see this starting construction. So, again, 10:00 a.m. tomorrow morning. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, Counsel Lenihan. Counsel McDonald.
Thank you. One, I just wanted to ask that if there, all of my colleagues who are planning spring cleanups of some kind, if you could just let me know, I would love to just create a combined graphic to make sure that folks who are trying to know all the cleanups know where you're headed, or if there are other, other cleanups that you know about. So, I know Counsel Lenihan, I know Counsel O'Malley, you've got one planned for Waits Mount, but if there are others, I just want to be able to help promote, so please, let me know. I, uh, wanted to make sure that folks, uh, get invited to the Green Malden Fair. This will be our second year, and it was a great event last year, and an opportunity for community members to come out and get connected to all kinds of environmental work in the city. So, that's gonna include everything from our composting program and our tree warden, um, to opportunities to talk about, uh, if you're interested in getting a heat pump or solar panels, um, and environmental advocacy groups, uh, that are, you know, that, um, uh, support our, you know, Middlesex Fells and all kinds of great, uh, great vendors and community organizations. We'll also be in the final stages of our climate action plan, getting public comment for that. So, I really hope that everybody will come out and attend. We're also gonna have an opportunity to adopt a drain whereby you can help keep a drain clean and help our Department of Public Works. I'm kind of excited about that. I think you get to name the drain, so.
Oh, man.
You can't, not everybody can choose the name Drainey McDranerson, but, you know, get creative. So, that's Sunday, April 28th, 12 to 3:00 p.m. at Pine Banks Park. Thank you. It's Sunday 28th, April 28th, 12 to 3:00 p.m. It's at Pine Banks Park, it's at the fieldhouse, which is like tucked behind the ballfields. Uh, we'll try to improve some signage, folks have some trouble getting there, but it's a great event. We'll see you there, thank you.
All right, thank you, Counsel McDonald. Counselor Colton Hayes.
Okay, um, get ready, I'm gonna list a couple of events here. So, uh, we're working hard, planning through, um, April and May, and I wanted to let people know, so Zonta, um, Women Making a Difference, uh, meeting, or event, I'm sorry, is going to be March 28th, which is actually this Thursday. Um, and congratulations to everyone being honored there. And the Malden Community Health Fest, so we're having that at Salemwood School Fieldhouse on April 6th, from 11:00 to 3:00. This has been a tremendous effort with community members, um, and myself, and then a few counselors, thank you, um, McDonald and, and Counselor Taylor, have, um, also been helping with this, that we have over 40 vendors, and that's during Public Health Week, so, come on out for that. And then Fuji Fishing Festival is April 13th, 9:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m., and that is at, uh, Felsmere Pond. It's a festival, it's not a derby, very low-key, we're just teaching kids to learn how to fish, which will hopefully then go take that over to, um, your event over at Pine Banks. And the North Shore Hispanic Association, April 25th, we're having our fundraiser, um, honoring some great peeps here in Malden. And then Ju, May 17th, Juneteenth, Music Bingo, so please sign up for that. Yeah, if you just Google that, it's an event, right? So, hopefully, I will see you at those events. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Counsel Colton Hayes. Uh, Counsel Spatafora.
Thank you, Mr. President. A couple of things, uh, let me start with the first, a lot of fundraising activity, the Malden Neighborhood Basketball League, the Malden Youth Baseball, and Malden Youth Soccer. Uh, it's actually Babe Ruth, not baseball, uh, in Malden Youth, uh, Soccer, I said, oh, it is baseball, Babe Ruth, excuse me, Soccer and Neighborhood Basketball. All those are great organizations, they rely on a lot of our donations. They're having a fundraiser April 5th at the Moose. Uh, they're gonna have hipputist, uh, Joe DeVito there, so, uh, come down. They certainly all need, uh, the support with the, uh, the kids, it's expensive to play sports these days. Uh, I also want to, um, congratulate Malden Catholic, they won the, uh, Division Two basketball tournament two weeks ago. Uh, good to see that it's actually two in a row. It's nice to see that coming back to Malden, uh, as well as, uh, I do want to give a shout out to Sheila Fromano, our old clerk, uh, had various jobs after that. She's on the, on the mend. What? I didn't say she was old. You said she was old. Oh, I'm sorry, yes, yes, I'm, play of words, play of words. I didn't mean that, but Counsel, uh, Condon.
I thought we were done with that.
For, yeah, former, uh, Sheila Fromano, uh, is on the mend, she had back surgery, so I want to, I want to wish her well on, on, um, on her men coming forward, so. Uh, and finally, uh, Happy Easter to everybody, if you celebrate that, uh, this Sunday, uh, is Easter Sunday, so, uh, whatever you celebrate, but it's a, it's a big holiday for the Christian community. Thank you very much, Mr. President.
Thank you, Counsel Spatafora. Counsel O'Malley?
Uh, I just wanted to, you know, let everyone know, I'm sure you heard about it, there's gonna be a total eclipse on April 8th. Um, the path of totality will not hit us here directly, but they should, there should still be a pretty cool. That's what it's called.
Sounds scary.
Well, uh, so, you, you bring up some great points. So, uh, because we do not have a total eclipse here, you have to be really careful, don't look at it. Um, the, the, the totality will be, you want to start looking around 3:00 p.m. Don't look at it directly. Uh, the, the totality where you can see it is at 3:26, that's when it's most dangerous. So, uh, that's when the, the rays are most concentrated moving around, uh, the moon. Uh, if you do want to look at it and not burn your retinas, uh, you can go to the Museum of Science, and you can buy some glasses. Uh, I would be careful buying them online or on Amazon, uh, they find they are counterfeit, uh, and you will burn your eyes. So, look into it, uh, they do recommend not buying it on Amazon. There's gonna be a cleanup at Waits Mount on April 14th at 9:00 a.m. I encourage everyone to come. And I just want to say, you know, I think tonight was a little of a roller coaster. Um, I am appreciative with how we generally did debate with respect. I am, I do want to apologize to Mr. Iovon, I think this was quite a, um, a traumatic experience for anyone. I, I do really want to express my, my heartfelt, um, you know, um, desire to work with him on the planning board going forward, and, you know, I do think that this master plan steering committee, my offer still extends to Counselors, uh, Spatafora and Crowe to get this, uh, master plan going. I, I do think that ideally we can turn this experience into something good, uh, and move our community forward. Thank you.
All right. And then, um, I just wanted to, uh, oh, let's see. Counsel Spatafora?
So, uh, total, total eclipse, I loved it, I thought you were gonna start singing in the beginning, but I just, I, for the benefit of the, for the rest of the, to the, uh, the city out there. So, I, I reached out to, because we had one call with Counsel McDonald was on about talking about the master plan, I reached out to Deb, uh, Deb Burke and, and Michelle Romero two weeks ago. They, they have to complete the open space law, be, uh, open space plan, because that's due by the end of this year. And then, uh, they got away with some CBG money to come in, because some of the bids they, I shouldn't say bids, some of the numbers they're looking for a master plan is well in the hundreds of thousands, so we can use some community block development grant to fund that, and so that's what we're waiting for. So, as soon as we get that, I mean, we, we're not stalling, we're just waiting for some of the funding to come through. I just want to let everybody know that.
Uh, thank, thank you. All right, good, good. So, I, I just got a few, um, just, I, I do want to wish, uh, the folks who, um, our Easter is part of their, their religious tradition. It's a very sincere, and the, the most, uh, sincere, uh, celebration in the Christian faith, so all have a good and happy Easter. I also did want to remind everybody, um, a week from Thursday, at Salemwood School at 6:00 p.m., we were having, um, a, the presentation of the draft vision for the Maplewood Square, it's a project that we've been working on for over a year, and, uh, you know, we've been getting the word out, so would love to have people come out, see what that vision is, and give comment, so we can go ahead, and, uh, that will, you know, hopefully, uh, be something that will be helpful to the master plan, but also be a way to get people in, uh, who, uh, want to see, uh, Maplewood be a vibrant neighborhood business center, um, to get engaged, so, um, thanks to everybody who's working on it, I hope you can come out for that, so. Motion to adjourn by Counsel O'Malley, seconded by Counsel Spatafora. All those in favor, say aye. We are adjourned, thank you, great.
Steve, is that meeting gonna be online? I know, I just wonder, because I know I, I can't. Oh. Oh.